Are we about ready? Morning. It is six o'clock on March sixth. Going to declare the meeting of the planning commission to come to order. We have the roll call, please.
Chair Solon.
Here.
Vice Chair Benyon.
Here.
Commissioner Doll. Commissioner Starber.
Here.
Commissioner Strauss Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Wilkins.
Here.
Benny. Interim Public Services Director Sullivan. Clark, here. Code Enforcement Officer Wilkinson.
Here.
At this time, we have a quorum and our next meeting will be March twentieth. Have a show of hands of those that are going to be here. We have a quorum for that one, too, so we meet next on March twentieth. The chair will entertain a motion to excuse Commissioner Doll.
They're moved.
Second.
Seconded. Discussion. All those in favor say aye.
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 The ayes have it. Approval of the minutes, February twenty first, twenty twenty four. You have a motion to approve them?
They're moved.
Second.
I'll second that.
Moved and seconded. Additions, corrections, deletions.
Didn't see anything.
None? Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Pretty signed up for public comments. No public hearing. Own continuing business. Code enforcement update. Have a presentation.
So we wanted to kind of get with the planning commission tonight and kind of give them an update on our code enforcement program. I know there's been lots of questions about code enforcement in the past. And specifically, Grant has asked me a couple of questions, so we want to kind of just give a quick briefing of where we're at, what we're doing with code enforcement, so the planning commission can just have a have a greater kind of understanding of what that program looks like. So we do have two two code enforcement officers. Shaila Wilkinson is with us tonight. She is one of our code enforcement officers and been with us the longest, and then we just hired a second code enforcement officer, Brandy Lamperson, who is kind of just coming out of her training and is going to be start is starting to take over her own cases. So those are our two code enforcement officers that we have employed with the city. So if you have specific questions, I might call on Shaila to ask those, answer those. So what what does code enforcement do? So code enforcement enforces the codes adopted by the city. So all of the codes that the planning commission looks at and the city council look at and adopts those codes, the code enforcement officers are the ones that ensure and take steps to make sure people are following those codes. That includes building code violations, environmental violations, land use, fire codes, utility violations, and public nuisance type properties. And so it's a wide range of things that they're doing. And it covers the map on different days on what they see out and about. So the kind of the code enforcement compliant process is it starts with a request for action unless it's considered a high, a life safety issue. So life safety issue like building without a permit, public type nuisances, those types of things, environmental issues that sometimes we do when we catch them. But ninety percent of our cases are our response to a request for action that is submitted by a citizen of the city. We conduct a site visit. Once we've conducted that site visit and verified that a violation exists, they issue a notice of violation. Once that violation is issued, it does say you have fifteen days to correct the violation. We know some violations can't be corrected in fifteen days. We have some violations that are going to take years to correct because of what they have done and how long does it take? So we have two kind of processes that flow from that. If you can do it within the fifteen days, or is it fifteen or thirty days, Shaila?
It's thirty typically is what we start with.
See, that's why I have Shaila here, because she writes the letters every day. If they can't complete it within that thirty days, get the permits, resolve the violation. We do have, we do have both a work plan, which gives someone up to six months to complete that program. That work plan is completely free and we can work with people on that. We also have what we call voluntary correction agreements that go longer than six months. Those do have a fee attached to them because we have to work with our legal department and we also have to record those on title. So if someone decides to sell the property, the second property owner has constructive notice that there's a violation on the property and how that property, how that violation is being resolved. That just so when people are purchasing property, they can purchase it wide open and understand that there's a violation and what it takes to resolve it. If people are working through those processes, we continue to work with them to get the project completed. Our ultimate goal is compliance more than anything. And we'd much spend, rather spend our time working with people on voluntary correction agreements and work plans. There are those people that do not choose to work with us in those manners and we do can do civil penalties. We are unique in the way we do civil penalties. Most jurisdictions in the state of Washington say it's a thousand dollars a day for the every day that the violation exists. And so they just basically start the clock on day one. And for every calendar day that you don't abate that violation, they add a thousand dollars to your fine. So if it takes you two weeks, that's fourteen thousand dollars. That's not how we do our civil penalties. We don't think that that's appropriate. We don't think it's consistent with recent case law. So the way we do our civil penalties is the code enforcement has to physically drive to the site and physically document that the violation exists that day. So typically, by the time we get to initial civil penalties, if somebody just has completely ignored us, it's only two thousand dollars because we went out to the first day to violate it. We went back there thirty days later to check on it again. Those would be the two days that we documented the violation. So we're a little unique in that. We think it's it's a little bit more appropriate to do it that way. And we recently have changed the also another part of our civil penalty program to allow the city attorney to settle or change the amounts of those civil penalties in those cases where people are working to abate the violation. And as part of getting that violation abated, again, I don't know if you've ever seen the movie, We Were Soldiers, and he goes, there's no three strikes. When you hit the third strike, there's always a way you can do better. And so we always give people as many strikes as we can give them. As I said, because our job is to get them into compliance. And finally, abatement and closeout. And you'll see at the bottom of the picture, some of the things that we're dealing with. I think a lot of times people think of code enforcement running around picking up signs or doing other things like that. But yes, that is a very small minor part of what the code enforcement officers do. Primarily what they're dealing with are the what we see on the pictures of the screen. The first picture is a house that has, it was a notorious drug flop house for over a decade that we were finally getting cleaned up and have got the property secured. There was actually a drug overdose on the property just a month ago, right before we secured it. There's been a couple shootings on the property. So that's the type of stuff that code enforcement is out dealing with on a regular basis. The next one is just, as you can see, a completely junked yard that the neighbors are complaining about. And the other one is a house so overgrown with vegetation and stickerboard that's compromising the house. So those are the properties that we are primarily dealing with in code enforcement and what the officers are primarily looking at. So dang, Shaila, you did a lot more than I thought. So as I said, it all starts with a request for action. The code enforcement go out and actually verify the violation. We do not go on private property. So if if you're, if we're coming to investigate your private property, we don't walk onto that private property. We stay in the road and do our investigation. In the case in the picture here, there was an open building permit. So we had the authority to go on the property. So we went on the property to measure some work that was being done without permits. So once the violation is verified, I kind of jumped the gun here. So the notice of violation is sent very first class mail to the property owner. The notice explains what the violation is, how to correct it, how to appeal it. We're also very unique in the in the city of Bonnie Lake is we do not charge for code enforcement appeals. Most cities charge anywhere from a thousand to five thousand dollars for appeals of code enforcement violations. We do not. We give you that free day in court with the hearing examiner to challenge our interpretation and enforcement of the code to protect those due process rights. Once the notice of violation has been sent, you have thirty days to come correct it in our work plan or do a voluntary correction agreement. As I said, the work plan is no cost to the property owner and gives them six months to to cure the violations. If a property owner needs more than six months, they can do a voluntary correction agreement, the five hundred dollar fees, as I said, as mentioned, and it recorded on title. Once we get to the end, and as I said, I think we have a couple voluntary correction agreements of like three and four forty's because people have done so much work by the time we catch them that it takes years and time to unwind those and get the permits that they need to get. And then the property owner or resident needs to schedule a final inspection with our code enforcement officers with the agreed timeframe and we close out the abatement order. So civil penalties, as I mentioned, if there's no contact from the property owner or the resident, we issue the civil penalties. And basically, as I said, it's that thousand dollars a day to to abate the violation. Again, some more pictures of the properties that we're really dealing with. This was a mobile home that had no sewer or water to it that we had to, once again, have someone remove, had to have them vacate the premises because it was unlivable. So here's some good examples. So this is working without a permit. Someone built an entire house, part of a house without a permit or began completely demolishing another structure without to require demo permit. And there's a couple reasons we require a demo permit. One is air quality. A lot of these older buildings have asbestos in them. And when they're doing the demolition, if they haven't abated the asbestos first, that's released in the air and neighbors can breathe in that asbestos. The second is that's how it's getting removed from the tax rolls. So once, once we get that demo proper work, that's what we provide to the Pierce County Assessor to actually remove it. This one, they, yeah, they demolished half of the back of their house and started building it without permits. And this is when we caught it, when it was like this. So that's a big one. We do 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 unpermitted tree removal. We do have, we do have a permit process for tree removal that's not hazard trees. We do have a process to remove hazard trees. Does not require a permit from the city. We don't challenge what the arborer says, but we do require then arborist to evaluate a tree to determine whether it's a hazard. The only different, the only change in that is if we can tell that it's apparently dead, then we can do that without an arborist report. So if it's an evergreen tree that has no leaves on it, we know it's dead. If it's a deciduous tree in the middle of summer and there's no trees on it, we know it's dead. So they do deal with the tree removal. And it is a backlash, right? Because people do want to maintain their property and keep their property up. But also what makes Bonnie Lake Bonnie Lake is our tree canopy. So it's a balancing act between those two. When we do surveys, one of the things that people love about the city is all the trees, right? So it's a balancing act between those, those two items. We do have re-roof permits and a lot of people ask us why we require re-roof permits. And this really comes into protecting homeowners. Not all homeowners are construction experts. And we were catching a lot of less than scripty old contractors doing re-roofs for seniors and taking all the vents off their attics and just roofing over their vents. And if you know anything about construction, the minute you do that, you start creating mold in their attics. So we instituted requiring a re-roof permit so our building inspectors can one make sure that only the roofing was replaced, not any of the structural sheeting and that the roof vents are still there. It's an over the counter permit. There's no planner view. You apply for it. You get it the day you apply for it. So real low maintenance, but we want to make sure that the homeowners are getting what they want. So the code enforcement officers are kind of making sure that people are getting those re-roof permits. And like I said, our biggest caseload and hardest caseload is nuisance properties. And we have a lot more in this city than I think people realize. So this is one, this is a chronic nuisance property. I've got going too fast. This was a chronic nuisance property off of that one hundred ninety second. It first started receiving complaints in twenty seventeen. The owner passed away in twenty twenty one and it became a squatting property and we got complaints of burning trash, nuisance vehicles, tents, threatening behavior, living in motorhomes, dumping trash in a public right of way, no trash service. It was basically just becoming a big, large mess. So here's a couple more pictures. There was even a trailer that they like to roll out in the road and say it's a little F down. So they were kind of creating their own little compound there. It was kind of unique. Shaila loved this one. But Shaila kept working with the property owner and finally, and this is before the council authorized us to have abatement funds. In October of twenty twenty three, it finally got completely cleaned up. Six years. And that was before we had abatement funds. So this, and during that six years, we didn't have full time code officers to motivate the property owner to kind of get the property cleaned up. Let's see what the next one is. Looking too fast. Oh, no. Yeah, that is next thing. So this is what we refer to. This is a property actually over by Allen York Park. We started receiving complaints on this one in twenty eighteen. This was the one I had mentioned that we had a shooting on. We had a drug overdose on. And the property, the main property owner passed away in twenty twenty one and his beneficiary passed away in twenty twenty three. This is the property owner that we have first started using our abatement funds on. So we got the property declared unfit for human habitation. And using those abatement funds that the council authorized, we were actually able to board up the property, all the doors and windows and have the hearing examiner, hearing examiner declare the property unfit for human habitation and the building, which means that nobody can be on that property. And if people start coming back to try to regain residency, because there is no owner at this point, the cops can escort them off the property. So it prevents it from becoming a kind of a magnet. Now, it's still in the current state it is, and we are still starting the next process of to get the property fully cleaned up and fully abated. We're working with our city attorney's office and Shaila is leaving leading the charge on that one. Shaila, anything?
No, I think you pretty much covered it all. I mean, if anyone has any questions on that one specifically, more than happy to answer. Or if you want to wait and hold questions till the end, whatever you guys want to do.
I will say this was the one that if you were on the police Facebook page that they posted about earlier in February where there was a police activity, shutting down the property out, property was actually a combined effort between animal control, our department and the police department. And the night, the day that we shut the property down, I think it was six police vehicles, five vehicles from our department, water, turning off the water to the property, and then two animal control officers that went to the site. So first time I've ever had people lean out of windows telling me thank you as we walked up the street. Well, like, you know, we felt like we were invading, you know, so that was kind of interesting. So kind of the same one. Oh, this one. Hey, Shaila, do you want to talk about this one?
Uh, yeah, sure. So it's kind of the same. It's actually really similar to the first one that Jason was talking about on one hundred ninety second. This one was on two hundred and third in Cedar View and has been a problem house for the officers that I've spoken to for over twenty, maybe thirty years. Lots of crime, squatting, drugs, burning trash, all kinds of things going on. This one, if you want to go to the next picture, I mean, you can see there are piles of trash. This is what it looks like now. It's been sold and they've been working with us to get it cleaned up and I think they're going to put a new manufactured home on it and sell it. So it's pretty similar to the first one. The owner had passed away and the people living there had no rights to be there and just another example of kind of the stuff we have going on.
And so this is another one that we have that the structure has been burnt down. We have it kind of posted unsafe to enter. We're going to be taking the next steps with the to contact the property owner to begin to demolish the burned out structure. It actually burned down a couple of years ago, several years ago. And the person that lived in it actually passed away. So we kind of were letting that heal. But now we need to start working with the property, the heirs to the property to begin to have them remove the the structure. So that that's kind of overview and that's why I've seen is, I know there's been a lot of talk about code enforcement. I know they get a lot of grief because they pull people's signs and they do stuff like that. But the main focus of code enforcement is really dealing with these nuisance properties and these life safety issues. I know it sounds, you know, it's my house, I can build on it, but if you build things that are not built to code and there's earthquakes or you sell that to somebody who doesn't know, they can be into a world of hurt. And so, you know, that that's why those codes exist and the code enforcement officers exist. And I said, most of their time is really spent on these nuisance properties. The thing that they're taking on that has not happened yet is we're also beginning to enforce our water and sewer provisions outside of the city because we have the authority to make sure that when people are connecting to our water system, they're connecting to it in a safe manner. If they have, they have to have their backflow devices in, and if they don't, those issues can be dealt with code enforcement or if they're making illicit connections to our water system or making illicit conditions to our sewer system. All those things have impacts on the ratepayers, especially if you're stealing water from the ratepayers. You're not having your backflow device in that puts the whole water system at risk. And so, yes, there are some things that we do that people are like, what are you doing that for? But really, the focus is on life safety, public nuisances and dealing with those issues. I have Shaila here. She can answer any questions if there's a specific property or question you have. But we can, you know, we can answer those questions.
Just thanks, but other than that, I think it looks good.
Do the police accompany the inspector when needed?
Yes. Katie, you want to talk about how that process works?
Yeah, so basically, we do quite a bit of research typically when we get a request for action. We look at who owns the property, some of the history on the on it, just so we kind of know what we're going into. And like Jason said earlier, we do everything from the right of way. So if we get there and it doesn't look like it's somewhere that maybe we should be by ourselves, we will typically work with the community service officer and he will accompany us and we'll kind of go from there. Typically, our first thing that we are doing is just kind of taking some pictures and assessing whether or not the complaint that we received is an actual violation. And then we go from there. But yeah, we we are working with them pretty closely and trying to kind of build more of a team mentality there and work together because a lot of these big properties, they they have land use stuff going on and the criminal things going on. So. Yep.
And both, and then both, both code enforcement officers do it. Well, we're getting the second one ordered right now, but the code enforcement officers do also have Kevlar vests, the same bulletproof vest that the police officers wear so that when they go to the site, they can have, if they need them, they have them. And everybody asked me why. I said, because I'd much rather explain why I bought a bulletproof vest and we never had to use it than the one time that we wish we would have had one, right? It's a, it's the world we live in and I'd much rather know that the officers are that they're coming back and that they're safe. So if there's no other questions, we can let Shaila enjoy the rest of her night and we can talk about Allen York Park.
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Have a good night.
Thank you, Shaila.
Bye.
Allen York Park, park, summer planning.
All right. So I'm going to share my screen real quick. I toyed with trying to figure out the best way to do this and this was the best way I knew how. So share my screen again. So you should be seeing a picture of Allen York Park on the screen now. I'm going to scroll in here a little bit so you can kind of get a little bit. So does everybody know, knows Allen York Park is a very popular destination in the summer, both for city residents and from people all over the South Puget Sound area, from Auburn, Kent, all the way down to Tacoma, Federal Way. All have, we have had them all coming out to to Allen York Park. It's only one of two public parks that are actually on the lake. The other one is on is owned by the county on the north side of the lake, North Island, North Lake Taps Park and then Allen Park, which was the one that we own. In recent past, that property has become, the park has become a very popular, which is great. People should always be enjoying parks. But with that large group comes crowds and activity to the point where last year we had calls for shots fired at the park. When Chief Barry and I took over this year, we got together and decided that we were going to develop a security plan for the park. And as the planning commission sits as the park board, we wanted to kind of discuss that security plan with the the planning commission, see if you had any other comments or thoughts. We'll start with the most popular item, the boat trailer or boat trailer parking and boat launch. The boat launch again this year will be for Bonnie Lake residents only who have purchased an annual boating pass. And then the boat trailer parking will be available for those who have bought that pass. At the entrance to the boat trailer parking will be a a security guard that will only let you in that trailer parking area if you show your annual pass. So if you run over and launch your boat and try to get in there without your annual pass, you're going to have to go back and get your boat. But if you've got your annual pass, you'll be able to park and launch your boat. We did put new locks on the gate this year with new codes. So if you bought a pass last year, you, those codes won't work again this year. We aren't looking at long term options for both boat trailer parking and the boat launch until we get the boat, the parks completely redesigned. And we'll be discussing that with council at the council retreat on March twenty third. In addition to that, we have limited the beach area and the volleyball pit area to two hundred and fifty people. There will be a security guard, parches, kind of posted at the entrance to kind of keep track of that. The reason that we landed at two fifty is we headed higher last year. But people sneak in and people get around the fences. So by limiting it to two fifty, we feel like we'll have better control. In talking with the police department, Chief Barry's plan currently is to have three uniformed officers in the park in the evenings and the weekends. One kind of policing the area, another doing kind of traffic enforcement and another one kind of doing parking enforcement. So kind of just looking at all those elements of the park. So kind of just looking at all those elements of the park, but actually uniformed officers, uh, to make sure that we have a high presence there. Um, we will be, we will have paid parking in the parking lot. The council approved that last year. It'd be four dollars for four hours or ten dollars for all day. Um, if you don't pay the paid parking, it's a two hundred and fifty dollar parking ticket. So we really encourage you to take the paid option versus the enforced paid option. Um, we will also have uh, the neighborhoods within a quarter mile of the park have been identified as restricted parking zones. So RPZ, so you have to have a permit to park on the streets. This is similar to what they do around the Sounder Station and Puyallup and in Sumner um, to prevent some, something that's a large community drill from having specific impacts on the neighborhood residents. And there's also been streets that have been identified as no parking. Um, this is all in attempts to kind of keep control of that. The, the um, maintenance crews will be going out every morning to make sure everything's cleaned up before the next day. Um, we will also be having porta potties on the beach area. I think we have three and one ADA stall. Then there on the field, we have the, the main field, we have the typical restroom facilities that's there, but there will also be a row of porta potties toward the west side of the, the ball field. Um, there's also a porta potty up around Ball Field Four, and then there's a restroom facility around Ball Field Five. We will continue to be renting out Ball Field Five throughout the summer. Um, however, the dirt fields, we will not be renting out during the summer, but we haven't typically seen a lot of rentals for those anyway. Um, the boat launch is closed on Wednesday nights uh, for the Toons at Taps. There will be a lot of city staff there. I know the planners will be there all summer again, doing comprehensive plan outreach. Um, and then um, also on Monday nights, there'll be uh, not a closed boat launch, but there will be people in the park to do uh, the kids' club that David Wells puts on. Um, so we have been meeting as a group, um, admini- administrative services, uh, myself, operations, um, the police department, uh, special events for, since early February, uh, trying to develop what we call a security plan. Um, I can show you kind of what that looks like. We're just kind of putting the last finishing touches on it, so hopefully I can stop sharing and I'll switch my screens real quick.
Jason.
Yes.
Are you charging uh, parking for the events?
No, the, the, all, both all events, we, the parking signs get basically bagged and so you can park. We'll have the boat trailer parking open for those Toons at Taps. We'll have the main lots open for Toons at Taps and we don't charge for parking for those community nights. So I'm going to share my screen again. And we'll be presenting this all to public safety next week, but we wanted to have a, just talk with the planning commission in your roles as the, as the thing. And we also in- in- included our emergency management coordinator raging uh, as we help develop these plans. So this has been kind of a, a city staff effort. Um, so we, what we've done, you can see on this here, we've developed the Allen York Security Plan. This is the first time we've kind of done it in this formalized way, um, starting May first through October first. So this is the kind of plan we're going to use for the summer. Um, there's a background section that I'm currently finishing typing it up, but basically laying out that background that we talked about um, with the park. Uh, we have clear objectives um, that we are trying to do uh, with this plan. Um, the first is under safety and security is an increase, increase the visibility of law enforcement and security throughout Allen York Park. Enforce safe and appropriate parking protocols for guest parking, including guests utilizing the boat launch and neighboring communities. Crowd control, develop and implement crowd management strategies. That's kind of like the limiting of the beach area. Uh, support community events and activities planned for Allen York Park. Uh, utilize social media and websites to provide update and information to visitors of Allen York Park. Regular inspect and maintain facilities, including playgrounds, paths in the beach area and ensure clean and functional restroom. So those are our objectives. So as we sat down and said, why are we putting this plan together and what are we doing? These are the objectives that we laid out and said, this is why we're doing it. And so then you'll see under the strategies, kind of how we're implementing those tactics and strategies. So as I said, uh, we're have, uh, the police are planning to have three patrol officers uh, on the, on the site. We may have to use out additional from outside agencies. Uh, we will be contracting with Pierce County Security for two sta- security guards, one for the gate and then one for the boat trailer parking launch area. Uh, we're going to thin the granary around um, Ball Field One. Uh, if you've ever been over there and you're kind of standing in a playground area or there's a wall of just shrubs, uh, we're going to take out every other shrub to increase visibility uh, so that we can see things throughout the park, uh, keep the parking light illuminated. Uh, going to have the boat launch chained up unless you have your pass. And I talked about the pass on Field Four, um, start beginning to enforce the paid parking within the park. And then there's four spots that are right across the street from the boat launch area. They're kind of where most of the trouble starts. We're actually going to cord nose off and make those for city vehicles only throughout the summer. So if someone from the parks, myself, operations, the police department need to get over to the park and park really quick, there are four spots that are reserved for us uh, so that we can also kind of keep our vehicles over there. Uh, and we're con- we're, we're working with Cascade Toting to provide uh, toes, so for surface for any cars that are parked incorrectly. Uh, crowd control, we're limiting uh, the guests on the beach to two hundred and fifty. And then as previous years, we're keeping the boat launch to citizens, residents only. Um, we are closing the boat launch on Mondays and Wednesdays to provide adequate parking and availability for community events. And the park will be cleaned and maintained to ensure positive experience for guests. Uh, we'll be, we're using the city's website and social media to push out um, information to the public about changes at the park, things they can experience and things that they can see. Really trying to change that image and communicate that message that we're there this year and we're there to keep the park safe. And it also parking updates by uh, mailing letters to the neighborhoods that are affected by the permit parking. Uh, park and then the maintenance crews will be on site at six thirty to including and restock the facility. And then as I said, we'll have the porta potties and those will be cleaned. And as we get into the summer, they get more clean with more. So those are kind of, that's kind of our plan um, for Allen York Park over the summer. Uh, as I said, this has been the first time we've actually developed a written plan that we plan to implement with the hopes that after the summer, we'll get together again. The plan is we'll get together again, review the plan of what we did and talk about the things that could have gone better and the things that went well, so that we can begin to develop the plan for the twenty twenty-five season. Because it's going to be a continuing thing as the park improves and as improvement gets built, we will also have to change our strategies as well. So without, I can answer any questions or if you guys have any comments that we, we should be considering. Right?
I like it. I um, was involved in the planning for basically taking back the Sea-Tac Mall when the gangs moved in over there several years ago. And outside of all the, the structural things that you plan to do, the biggest thing that we found was the policy or the, the mindset of little to no tolerance, especially at the beginning. You establish whose turf it is, which is kind of a gangster way of saying it, but it's, it's the way it is. Um, you establish the reputation as you go there and you, you cause problems and you get in trouble um, with little, no tolerance and the word gets out and the troublemakers find someplace else to go. And it's easier to maintain that by going in hard at the start than it is later on trying to catch up, which is the problem we had at the mall.
Um, okay, I have a question on the parking. How is the parking going to get paid for? Are we going to do like a, like a, all right, like a box? Or is there like a, we enter their, our parking spot and get a thing and then put it in our car? Like, how are they gonna, we're going to pay for parking?
So there'll be signs in the park, just a regular sign that has a QR code on.
Okay, cool.
So you walk up with your phone with a QR code. You scan the QR code, it'll take you to a website, you put in your parking, your, your license plate number. Um, you pay your four or ten dollars and that, then you can park at any spot.
Okay, cool.
There's not assigned spots. It's based on, it's based on your license plate number.
Okay.
Um, and then when we do the, when the police do the enforcement, what they basically do is pull a list from that website um, that has all the paid license plates. And as they go through the parks, if there's a license plate that's there that's not on the paid list, then they're charged. Or if you're outside of your four hours, right? So if you park there and pay for four hours, but you're at hour five, you won't be on that list for that window and you would then receive a parking ticket as well. Um, and so that's how we're doing it. Try to keep it as low tech, well, low cost in the sense that we're not buying kiosks that we have to maintain or printer paper that we have to do and that it's all web-based. That you can just run off a QR code by walking up to the sign with your phone.
Perfect. That sounds great.
Craig?
Is there a secondary for somebody who doesn't have a, a smartphone?
There isn't. Um, that was a system that the city went with. Sure that there will be that one person and we'll have to figure out how to cross that. Um, when we get there. Yeah, I'll put that down as one thing we need to consider.
Any other questions?
Looks good.
And incidentally, when it gets to be Toons at Taps, um, we all volunteer to go out and speak with the public.
Yes, we will, we will be asking the planning commissioners again this year to help us ban the planning booth um, as we try to get people's feedback on the, on the comprehensive plan. Um, so yeah, we'll hope to have planning commissioners out there as well.
Had a whole bunch of fun.
Did you break my chair?
I think I did.
Can't, this is why we can't have good things.
Yeah.
For the good of the order, correspondence? None? Staff comments?
Uh, so I'll start with the big news. Uh, yes, if you haven't heard already, Mayor McCullough resigned last night at the city council meeting effective about two hours ago. Uh, so he's no longer the mayor. Uh, and as what he said at the meeting was he took a job and had to choose between taking that job and staying as the mayor. Uh, his, his new employer felt that it was a conflict of interest and he couldn't do both. Um, so he resigned being the mayor. Uh, the council is in the process now of considering how to appoint the next mayor. There's not as identified specific process, only that the person is appointed by the city council till the next election. So the person that's appointed will remain mayor until the end of twenty twenty-five, when the next, well, till the election is, is certi- is verified, certified. So sometime in late twenty twenty-five, if it's not the person appointed, we're being run a new mayor.
How long is the term?
Uh, it's the, the mayor's term was from twenty twenty-one through the end of twenty twenty-five. So they're appointed until the election is certified in twenty twenty-five. So the election's in November, early November, they certify it, you know, two or three weeks later. At that point, whoever wins the mayor's race will be set immediately and serve out the rest of twenty twenty-five and then their four-year term from twenty twenty-six to twenty thirty.
When they appoint the mayor, are they going to uh, open it up for a council member to be filled? I should say, a vacancy for the council member?
It depends on who gets appointed. The council last night was discussing whether or not they want to open it to just council members, the council members and the general public. The council's still going through that. There's more discussion on Tuesday night um, about that. Um, if it is a council member, then yes, then they would have to do the appointment for the council member through their typical process, which is calling for applications, having, having interviews and then seating that council member. Um, so that is another process that we may be going under as well. And that depending on who the person is that got selected to be the council, depending on where they're at and their, that seat is in their term will determine how that seat is replaced in the future. So. And the biggest impact it may have on the planning commission. It is while Grant and Debbie have applied to be reappointed and we have one person that has applied to be appointed to the planning commissioner. I was hoping to take an ordinance to council next, a resolution or motion next week to council confirming the mayoral appointment of those three individuals, as I have no mayor.
Can they have a deputy mayor?
Yeah, but I don't know if the deputy, that's a whole process I got to go through.
Yeah.
So we're hoping to do it on the twenty-third of March, which means we won't have to miss any planning commission meetings. If we don't get it done on the twenty-third for whatever reason, then we could meet again on the third of February, because the terms.
April?
I'm sorry, April, because the terms technically expire in um, April fifth. But after that, we're kind of on borrowed time. And we'd have to wait till we get the reappointments done because we'd only have three commissioners. Commissioner Wilkins, Commissioner Benyon, Commissioner Dahl, which means we don't have enough for a quorum. Because we have four seats that we're appointing right now. So I just want to let you guys know in advance that if I, we get close to that and I know, I'll know on the twenty-third. So I feel I'm okay. At this point, I'm still okay. I think we're going to be okay. But if you hear that, okay, we're just canceling the next meeting, then it's, it's God, uh, Commissioner Strasburg and Chair Sol, it has nothing to do with your reappointments. It just has to do with this weird thing of losing the mayor before I could get the, the motions through. So yes, the deputy mayor can stand in, but I haven't had a chance to talk to the deputy mayor to make sure he's okay with the same appointments. I feel like I have to at least give him that. I have to give him that courtesy to make sure he's okay with it. So, um, I just want to give you the update of where we're at.
Thank you.
If it's not one thing, it's another. We realize that we're just putting out fires at this point.
Did we get an application for the vacancy?
We got an application for one vacancy.
We still have one more.
We will have another one. So we got an application for technically Commissioner Hubler's vacancy. The second vacancies we have is Commissioner Sarver has decided not to be reappointed. Uh, and so we'll need to, we're still trying to find someone to take that chair. We're hoping to get it done as soon as possible so we can be back to full strength this time. So if you know of anybody who's looking to be on a planning commission or would be interested, yeah, please, please uh, have them fill out the application, um, and we'll take a look. The second comment, the second staff comment is, um, Mehdi Brazel is going to be taking over kind of the lead on the comp plan effort with me now filling both the development services manager role and the director role. Just not enough time in the day for me to do everything. Um, and so she's going to start rolling through the planning commission late April or early May with elements. And Grant, I did not keep my promise. We are going to be on a lightning round to try to get that comp plan done because of all of the things that kind of blew up our timeline. So uh, she's taking the lead on um, two of the elements and I'm going to wrap up two of the other, oh, so three, no, four of the elements and I'm going to wrap up two of the elements. So between the two of it, we're, we're going to try to have it done by the end of the year. Um, we've restrategized, uh, and instead of trying to do the things that we think would be kind of interesting, cool and I could, could add to the comp plan, um, we're stripping it down to the bare necessities of what we have to get done for the end of the year. And we can circle back on those optional things um, that we think would help the community at a later date. Um, so just want to give you the heads up on that.
It's not anything that we haven't dealt with before.
No, but you know, I had this whole plan that we had, we had been working it and then it just blew up on me. Um, I will say I scared Mehdi yesterday, uh, when I laid out to her that really this isn't the end between, between now and the probably twenty thirty-two-ish year. We have major things due almost every other year. So as soon as we get done with the comp plan, we have a big ADU bill that we have to tackle. Then we have an SMP update we have to tackle. We have a climate change element that we have to write by twenty thirty uh, with a resiliency sub-element and while we're also doing the comp point of the store line master plan update. Uh, we've got a middle housing bill that's going to come online for us about the same time. Uh, so there's a lot of work that's going to occur in the next six to seven years, uh, that's going to kind of keep our foot to the, to the pedal. Um, but luckily we have two great planners now. Um, I think this is probably some of the best planners we've had on staff between Mehdi and Kennedy. Kennedy is also a rock star and is helping out, uh, doing a lot of research and technical work. And lots of stuff that is, is not fun. Lots of doing Excel spreadsheets and moving documents around and doing research and stuff we need to have done. And we, we want to say thank you, Kennedy. You're a rock star too. So um, with that, I can answer any questions. So um, with that, I can answer any questions. If you've heard anything or have any questions that I can answer.
So next, on the twelfth, they're planning and having everything figured out for the mayor, right? That's like the plan for the next council meeting?
We hope so.
Okay.
And we've, and, and the next planning commission meeting, we do have scheduled for the twentieth. I will try to keep my best to keep that date, but I don't know if we'll have materials ready. It's just really, right now, we're trying to scramble
Yeah.
to figure out how we can get materials ready.
So much stuff in the air.
Yeah.
Commissioner comments? None? Motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second.
I'll second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, we're adjourned.
I think once you always figure out a plan and then, then you got to figure out another plan. You got to figure out another plan.
No plan survives.